That's great.
No, this was, there's actually two.
It's like right here.
Musk.
Tesla.
Tesla. And it's really, it's a future risky book.
Looks like origami.
There's one in Berkeley running around.
Looks like, looks like an origami car. I like to say that it answers a design question that should never been asked in the first place.
Oh, absolutely. This was, this was close. Billy, it's almost like this one here.
Yeah, exactly.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the regular boarding of, the regular meeting of the zoning board of appeals on Monday, October 14th. We are here from City Hall Council Chambers. I'd like to call a meeting to order and if we can all stand, face the flag and say the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Member McDonald?
Here.
Member Sarah?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Allen?
Here.
Member Creel?
Here.
Member Krug?
Here.
And Chair McGalpine?
Here.
All present, so we do have a confirmation of a quorum tonight. And thank you, Ms. Kaplinsky. If we can, we all have a copy of our agenda for this evening's meeting tonight at our desk here. If we can all review that and if everyone is good with how it's been laid out, we just need a motion to approve the agenda as presented, please.
So move.
Second.
Great. All in favor of approving this evening's agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Next up is the approval of our minutes from our August 13th, 2024 meeting. Those were included in our packet. Hopefully you've all had a chance to review them. I was unable to attend, so I appreciate Mr. Allen's support in sitting in my place. If everyone has had a, a chance to review them, if there are any changes, revisions or additions, if we can discuss those now, if not, we will take a motion to approve the minutes from the August 13th, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second tip.
All in favor of approving the minutes from August 13th, 2024, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? So the minutes from that meeting have been approved. Seeing as we have no new business for this evening's meeting, we'll jump right into our new business. First up is application number PBA 1424. It's prime management located at 2400 Greenfield Road, parcel 2518 301 031, located on the east side of Greenfield between Oxford and Catalpa in the Greenfield District, and they are requesting a sign variance. If you could go ahead and give us some background on this, please.
Sure. So this particular property was recently approved for redevelopment by the planning commission in the last couple of years, and it's been under construction, they're nearing completion, and looking at installing signage. It's going to be a multi-tenant office building. As I understand it, there, there will be some medical and then potentially some general office as well. In the course of looking at the signage for this particular site, they would be allowed a wall sign or a monument sign in this district, which is the Greenfield District. The applicant would like to install a monument sign with the name of the office center along with the address, and then would like individual wall signs for each tenant. So the Greenfield District treats these a little bit differently than other districts do. Across the board, you are allowed an identification sign that, that's only allowed to be six square feet. In other districts, so not in the Greenfield District, if you're a multi-tenant building, you're also allowed up to 10% of your wall area as a wall sign. In the Greenfield District, wall signs are permitted, but they're limited to the six square feet. So the applicant's requesting a couple variances here. One, to allow wall signs larger than six square feet, and then the other to allow each tenant to have a wall sign. And one other thing I did want to add. So we talked about other districts, or I talked about other districts allowing wall sign for multi-tenant buildings. In those districts, less than 10% of the adjoining wall space is what would be permitted. That doesn't apply here, but for a point of reference, what the applicant is proposing is less than 10% of the adjoining wall space. And then, as usual, there are some sample motions in your packet, and then Kim Anderson had went through and provided the standards for review with some staff comments as well. And one of the things she noted in several of the, of the comments was that the, the speed limit and the, the rate at which the cars are traveling by on Greenfield, that it would be tough to see a six-square-foot wall sign. So just something to note.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from my fellow commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes.
So the, under the new signage, new zoning signage, would this, would this be allowed in the, within the new?
So I knew this question was going to come, and so I looked this up earlier today. So the Greenfield District in the new sign ordinance is treated very similarly to all of the other districts, so the 10% of the wall area. However, something that we still need to address and correct in the new ordinance is some delineation for multi-tenant buildings. So that's not in the draft now, I will make sure that it is. But the intent would be, as we're treating multi-tenant buildings now, 10% of the wall area, if they were to go for a wall sign. Now, something else to keep in mind, though, is that, under the new ordinance, you could choose a wall sign or a monument sign, but you couldn't have both.
Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. This is new construction, correct?
Correct.
Never been anything on it before?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Okay. If not, I would ask the petitioner come up to the microphone, and if you could state your name, your address, and tell us a little bit about what you are requesting, please.
Thank you for allowing me to present my appeal this evening. My name is Dan Winter. I'm here on behalf of ownership, 2400 Trust, on this particular location. As mentioned, this is new construction building, approximately 4,800 square foot in total. There are six tenants, six spaces, I should say, all individual. All will have their own restrooms, heating and cooling, utilities as well. The four units in the middle of this building will be 600 square feet. The two end units here will be 1,200 square feet. Proximate frontage of each of the four in the middle is 12 foot by 50 foot, thus 600 square feet. As Kristin mentioned, these will be targeted toward professional office and, and medical, depending on parking. What we were looking to do, the current ordinance, as mentioned, calls for two foot by three foot, which coincidentally, that's what this board is. And so what we're trying to do is come up with a uniform look for the building, and again, taking in the fact that the, I think it was in my original packet, but the building is set back 80 feet from the right away, and then another 12 feet to the edge of the curb in the first lane there. So you've got quite a distance back, and I don't know if it was in your packet, but I had a scale drawing done by the architect showing the current, and I haven't printed it whole enough, but the current scaled size would be allowed two by three, which is the size. What they're requesting for the middle is, is basically one foot each taller, so going to four foot rather than three, and instead of going three foot, going to five foot. So we're proposing to do that. And then on the two end units, because they are bigger, they're double spaces, those would, we would politely request four foot by six foot. The signs themselves would be a product called alumilite, which is a brush chrome finish. They would be placed up high on the facade above these awnings. Likewise, again, I can bring the board up.
Can you pull up some of these? I think some of them were in our packet, I'm sorry.
Yes, I can.
Yeah, they were, yeah.
So this is the ordinance compliant example, and then this is the request.
Correct. Above each of the awnings would be a linear LED, again in brush chrome, that would just shine, shine straight up on the sign area. The signs are a lumilite, as I mentioned, a composite material with metal in it. They would have stainless steel standoff that are about inch and a half tall, and they would be attached in the corners and be floating off the surface. I think that's about my request overlay. As far as the sign that Kristin mentioned, the informational sign that we're proposing or requesting a variance on in order to have both would just be a informational sign, so it would have the address, maybe call it, you know, office center or something like that, but no tenant advertising in that sign area, excuse me, on the road. So basically, it's a marker, so that when people are, again, traveling both directions in the center lane from a distance, they can see this, we'll call it monument or marker sign, I guess, so that they would illuminate and know where to turn into the center.
Okay. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the petitioner? Yes. Ms. Air?
Are, are these determined, is each tenant picking what they want on the sign and the look of the sign? Or are you expecting them to give you information and you keep them consistent?
Good question. What we're looking to do for uniformity of the building is to go ahead and establish the sign area, so that they will be consistent on the building face. And therefore, the tenant basically would just be getting a permit, from what I would understand, to either attach, which is part of using that material, it's metallic, and they're now making dimensional magnetic letters that you can attach with the business name or use a vinyl graphic. And again, I think that would be part of the permitting process, if, you know, for each individual tenant, but they would not be allowed to do something different. It would, that would establish their sign area.
Yes, Mr. Willner?
So the monument sign would strictly have just the address of the building on it?
Thinking a large font, in this case, 2,400, and then maybe just say some verbiage, you know, like office center or medical office center or professional offices, something along that line. I think the word is a marker, they call it. So it would just identify that this is a office building, but no, you know, no tenant names in there.
So the zoning doesn't allow for any sort of address, like addition, in addition?
It does, but it's limited to the six square feet. So this is, this would be a monument sign. We would consider that a monument sign, which is why the applicant's before you, because then we have these additional wall signs.
So they could do something different with an address placard or something by the street? I mean, does it allow for any sort of?
Being so small, I don't think it would work as a placard by the street. I think it'd have to be on the building. But I think part of what the applicant is wanting to is some sort of identifier that this is an office center. And even if they were to, let's just say for argument's sake, the monument sign were to go away, we'd still be looking at six wall signs when only one would be permitted in this particular district.
Right.
Yes, Mr. Allen?
Yeah. I'm just looking this over and looking for, at the standards for review, and it's a little bothersome to me that we have a brand-new development, that this wasn't taken into account as it was being laid out. I don't know. It, you know, how many signs are enough or too many? And the one standard that I keep going back to is standard B. The, it's not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Well, if you didn't plan for a sign, you most certainly took an action, and now you want to correct it. And it just bothersome to me.
So was there signage on their approved plan shown?
Oh, I can't recall if there was signage on their approved plan, but it's not something the planning commission would review. It would, there would be no review at all of the signage at the time of the site plan.
Even if it's shown on there, it wouldn't?
Even if it's shown, under a separate permit.
I'm just going to make a comment that we did show signage areas on the building, but we're told at the planning commission that it had to be handled separately as a sign permit. But we did show actually larger signs during the planning commission, but as you mentioned, it was a separate, from what I understood, application.
Any other comments or questions for the petitioner? All right. Thank you very much. So next up, I would like to open the public hearing, and if there is anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak on this matter, if you could please state your name and address for the record, and let us know your thoughts on the request regarding the signage, please.
Greg Duras, 3795 Bacon Avenue. I noticed yesterday, actually, as I drove by the board of appeal signs out in front, and so I, I looked into this. I had seen that the developments were there, and that's what brought me here, is that I saw that this is a new construction. As one of the members of your body here said, it's new construction. And my immediate reaction was like, why is this being addressed after the fact? Maybe there's a reason that, that I'm not aware of in terms of procedures, but it seems to me if there are variances to be had in any project, they ought to be done upfront, not after the fact. And I can't help but wonder if this was part of a strategy, to come before you when your building is all finished and say, the signs aren't big enough. It's an uncomfortable position to put this body in, in making a decision, as opposed to upfront. So I think you need to take that into consideration. And I guess the other thing is that every variance has the potential to set precedent. Either indirectly or, or if not by, by law, because if you change something and it adversely affects someone else, they can come and point to the decision you made and say, you did it for them, why aren't you going to do it for me? So I think the one wrinkle is the potential change, and it was something that I wondered, is, is the, is the rezoning, the new zoning going to change signage requirements? And you said it potentially has. I also think, however, that you commented that under the new zoning for signs, if it passes, they'll have to choose between a monument sign or a wall sign. They don't get both. And so if I understood that correctly, I think you need to take that into consideration in the zoning. Even though that's not the law right now, you need to take that into consideration in terms of the variance that you would vote in favor of. And last but not least, if the idea, well, not, two more things. One, if you're coming southbound and you're on the southbound side of Greenfield, your angle of vision is completely different than if you're coming northbound. And I think you should consider that, because I don't think that's a, a line of sight issue. If you're coming northbound, as it turns out, there's a parking lot for the church right before. So, so it's an open area as you're coming north, and you can see a, a building coming up. That would be, and there's two. I mean, he has, he has another one coming up next, and same thing on, on the one north of 12 Mile Road. I don't know which one we're talking about right now, but the one north of 12 Mile Road, there's a parking lot next to the restaurant. So you can, you have a good line of vision as you're coming up. And the final thing I would say, if you want aesthetics, to me, it doesn't matter whether the frontage is a little smaller or a little bigger. Aesthetics would suggest if you want uniformity, whatever you choose to do, the signs ought to be the same size. Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else up to you?
Yeah, I just wanted to clear up a few things.
Sure.
So in my experience, in a couple decades of planning now, sign permits are always done after the fact. And part of the reason for that is you could have a user come in that would want three or four spaces, and that's going to change the sign that they would have. So it's not unusual that this is, is in front of you now.
The order is, the order is very typical of what we expect, what you would expect.
Yeah. So just, just to clear that up. And I, I do want to also point out that we talked a little bit about the new draft zoning ordinance, and I think that that's relevant for you to think about. But I think the board is well aware that what you need to look at are the standards only. And please keep in mind that that ordinance is in draft form, so we're still, we're still picking up and correcting some things. So I don't want you to think that that's the final draft version that's out there.
And we don't operate on precedent. Every case is one by one.
Well, what, what I was also going to say is that we just need to make sure that we review this in accordance with how it has been laid out and our standards, and that it is a unique situation, and this request should be based solely on the conditions and the situation and the petition as, as it's been presented.
Can I ask, is it rare to have a owner of a building come here for several tenants? I mean, wouldn't you think that it would be tenant-specific, the requests, or is that abnormal?
I think it's usually tenant-specific, but I think this is a unique circumstance in that we have a multi-tenant building on Greenfield, and I don't know that a multi-tenant building was something that was anticipated when this particular sign ordinance was written. So I think you have a multi-tenant building that the sign ordinance doesn't really have standards for multi-tenant buildings in this district, which is why I think this is before you.
Well, and we've run into similar situations, especially on Woodward, where you have multi-tenants. If you looked at the way it was written, it's not proportionate because of the, the space that we have available. So we've had situations where this is, this has become an, an issue, and it is based on them making changes, not necessarily the multi-tenant piece of it.
Right. And I think this is a good illustration of why we're working on the zoning ordinance and, and the sign ordinance, because it's a situation that I don't think the original ordinance anticipates.
Well, it's just a different nature of a building these days that we have, so. Okay. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to come forward? And I note that we have no correspondence, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So I'm going to go ahead and close the portion of the public meeting and open it back up to my fellow commissioners for discussion.
So I don't see a proposed monument sign size, or is it, or do I just not, is it here and I just didn't see it?
No, that, that's not being considered as part of this pack, this application. You're just looking at the variance for the wall signs and the size of the wall signs.
So the monument sign meets every, meets the criteria?
Right. Permitted. Yep.
And so the question is, do they get signs that size or slightly larger?
So?
There are no signs at all?
The, the question becomes, you have, they could have the monument sign and just the monument sign, and that would be what the ordinance allows. They could have wall signs that are six square feet. Again, another illustration of how the ordinance isn't well-written in this instance is that identification signs are also allowed at six square feet. So if they had a six-square-foot sign, it would be okay for each tenant? But they're before you because the Greenfield District identifies wall signs also as six square feet, so we've got them identified as two different types of signs. So staff had to make an interpretation of what we're going to look at this as. And then you also have the fact that the signs are larger than six square feet. If that was a little bit confusing, tell me if you're still not, it's not clicking.
I, I think I get it. It's, it's, you know.
So why are we talking about the, why was the monument sign discussed if they're not?
It's, it's, they're not asking for a variance for that. I just wanted to point out that that is something that they would like to have as well, and that would be permitted under the ordinance. They also want wall signs. So that's additional, usually it's one sign per frontage.
So something on the door would not count as a wall sign then? Like Doctor so-and-so on the door would not count as a wall sign?
Okay.
I think we can satisfy section B. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners, just based on that discrepancy alone and the confusion about what this district does and does not allow. I also think it's, I share, you know, Brother Allen's frustration with the fact that we're here after the planning commission has already approved this new build, and they're asking for a variance off, off the top. It just, to me, seems completely illogical. And so to say, okay, you have a new build on one of the most prominent streets in Berkeley, and that sign's tiny. I mean, it's called what it is. You're not going to see that from the road. I don't care if you have eagle eyes. So, you know, are we really gonna? I mean, it's been reverse engineered, but not to the detriment, not to the, the fault of the applicant, which is where I struggle with this, with this problem.
Anyone else want to make a, yes, Mr. Allen?
Yeah. Signs are not the purview of the planning commission, period. They don't have to watch out for it. They don't have to ask for, ask the person building the property for guidance as to how to do it. It's just something that people need to be aware of. And this is, it's not very clear, but it's interpretable, for sure. Especially B, because nobody else did it other than the person who's building it.
So when someone turns in an application, there's no zoning review as part of that permit application?
Oh, there's a zoning ordinance review. Are, are you talking about the sign application?
Well, I mean, I guess.
So the process works, that if someone comes in, they want to build a building, they submit a site plan. The site plan is reviewed for things like setbacks and parking, and all of the things that you would normally think of as dimensional requirements, including the facade of the building. But it is not reviewed for signage. Remember, Allen is completely correct. And that is because they don't always know who the tenant's going to be. Like I said, you could have one tenant that could come in and take up four spaces, and that's going to completely change the proposed signage.
Got it. I mean, I'm in agreement. I'm totally in agreement that the signs, you can't, you won't see the sign. I mean, that sucks.
In the end of the day, if there were six spots and someone took five, you'd only need two signs instead of six.
Did they, did the commission know that it was going to be a six-unit building?
It's, it can be presented as up to a six-unit building, but the floor plan is also not something that the planning commission's really looking at.
Even if they did, I, they do not look at the sign, the signs.
No, absolutely not.
I mean, they go, oh, there's signs, okay, move on.
They are instructed to specifically not look at the signs.
I was going to say, they, they, signs, move on. I mean, it's almost like they ignore the fact that there are signs.
Yes.
And the wall area is less than the 10%. I mean, I'm, 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 yeah, I would be in favor of.
Would you like to make a motion, Mr. Willner?
Do you have something?
Ms. Air?
I was just going to say, I'm, I'm torn because I, I agree with you on the signs and the size, but in using like GPS, I put in the address. So when, I wouldn't be looking for a sign for the name of the business necessarily if I'm using GPS to locate my destination.
And I'm going to say my 80, 82-year-old dad who has GPS, who has an iPhone, has a Mac, has all that stuff, still would probably put it in and still probably would not know that he's driving past it.
Right.
And there's a lot of people that don't rely on that, still.
We have, we have a friend who uses maps to go on a road trip.
Okay? Can I just say hello to him? You just did.
He usually watches.
You just did.
But the same, you know, the same street. Think about the Berkeley Urgent Care. I mean, that is an example of a sign. Granted, it's probably a little larger than we're considering here, but that draws people to the business. I mean, especially the new business, or six new businesses starting. I mean, that, that stuff matters. I'm not putting my GPS something that I don't know exists until I drive past it and may or may not require those businesses' services.
Okay. So Mr. Willner was prepared to put? Forward motion? I'm sorry, Mr. Allen?
Before we move in, I would feel a lot more comfortable if we'd go over all five of the standards of review, for review, please.
Sure. Just reopen the packet. Okay. So the first standard for review is the need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Um, would you agree with it, Mr. Willner, since you're the maker of the motion?
Yes.
The next up is, the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Yes, you agree? Okay. The third one is strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. And you would agree yes to that?
Yes.
Number four, the request for the variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant as well as the other property owners. Yes. And actually, they're in compliance with what we have, the- the- the size of the sign moving forward, potentially, or in other areas of the city. And the request of the variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties. Yes. And I'd also think that hopefully that will help people identify the location and maybe not lead to backup on Greenfield. So, given that, um, it is your standing that it meets all five criteria, and therefore you want, you have a motion to approve the variance as requested. Is there support for Mr. Willner's motion?
I support.
Mr. Creel, okay, if we can take a roll call vote, please.
And that was Willner and Creel, correct?
Correct.
Member Allen?
No.
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
And Sheriff McAlpine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you. And then, next up, um, on the agenda is, um, application PBA 1524, and that is with Prime Management as well. This prop- property is located at 3462 Greenfield. The parcel number is 2507355043, located on the east side of Greenfield between 12 Mile and Edwards, and the Greenfield District, uh, is requesting the sign variance. If you could go ahead, Ms. Kaplansky, and give us some background on this case as well.
So this is pretty much exactly the same request that you just considered. I can go into detail again if you'd like, but it will really be the exact same thing that I said for the previous case.
Okay, does anyone see a need for her to go into detail again?
No.
Okay, does anyone have any questions for her that are different than the questions we just went through? No. With that being said, I will ask the petitioner to come up to the microphone again. Please state your name and your record, uh, given this specific application, and tell us if there's anything, uh, that we should consider that would be a little bit different for this particular request.
Uh, yes, Dan Winter on behalf of North Green Trust. This is for 3462 Greenfield Road. As mentioned, this is basically a sister building, um, identical in all aspects except for the exterior, um, materials used. Would be, again, asking the same, based on the same criteria that was mentioned, um, the existing sign allowed is to, basically proposing the same request, layout-wise, for the four signs in the middle to be three foot by five, the two, uh, north and south at each end being four foot by six. Uh, illumination would be the same, um, the material used the same. As mentioned, the- the issue is the length, um, of- of distance between the face of the building and the road, and the safety ability for people to locate, uh, the sign, um, on Greenfield, either north-south or from the centered lane.
Okay, any questions for the petitioner? Nope?
Am I, well, is this, am I making a mistake? That this is currently like a residential that's gonna be knocked down, or?
No, sir, this is, um, exact building in the same condition. Uh, both of these buildings, uh, will be completed in the next six weeks, fully. Um, but these buildings are both, um, fully, fully built out. Harking lots are in, landscaping is in, um, currently on the finishes on the interior.
So I think it- it previously might have been homes when the Google Earth photo was.
Yes, I'm sorry, there was two homes on there, and two years ago they were demolished, and then this is the new.
Just like the rooftop discussion.
I see, okay.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Certainly.
I'm gonna, um, open this portion of the meeting up to the public. If there is anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and, um, discuss this, this variance request, if you could please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, please.
William Seaman, 3461 Elwood. On this, the building's on the outside. Are those signs gonna be on the side of the building, or they're gonna be on the front with the rest of them?
They will be on the front facing Greenfield.
Yeah, 'cause, trust me, I got a ninety-year-old house, and you stand in the kitchen, you look out there, and all you see is lights everywhere. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on this?
Sheriff McAlpine, could I add one thing on the lighting? So any lighting that's installed would require an electrical permit, and it will need to be downcast. So they couldn't be lit up this way, they were gonna need to be lit from above and facing down, 'cause it needs to be ninety-degree cutoff.
Oh, on the signage, or?
Like you had me, you had mentioned in the first application that there would be a light above the awnings that would uplight the signs. It's gonna have to be downlit, so the light's gonna have to be above the- the letters, or the sign. We can talk about it later, but it would be reviewed under the electrical permit.
Right, okay.
Yeah, understand.
Okay.
I thought it would make less light, um, going up, but they would just shine onto the sign area that made so that they're very narrow spots. And it was just trying to do is just illuminate the signs, you wouldn't have any more light coming down. As you mentioned.
All right, um, so we go ahead and close the portion of, um, the public hearing, and we will, uh, open it back up for discussion amongst my fellow commissioners. Anyone have a discussion, comment? Anyone ready for a motion?
The only difference I see is.
Mr. Creel?
Is you could, you could see this better from 12 Mile heading east at the stoplight than you could on Greenfield, the previous one, heading in opposite directions, north and south. But I think we've talked, it's- it's largely the same application. I- I think a lot of, if not everything, still applies, what we discussed earlier.
Are we ready for a motion, then? If so, we can go through and discuss the standards for review and make sure that everyone's comfortable that this meets them. I'll, I'll, um, do the motion if you'd like. Please, thank you.
Um, in the matter of PBA 15-24, which is 3462 Greenfield Road, parcel 04-25-07-355-043, motion to approv- approve the requested variances from City Code Chapter 94. Signs, Section 94-7 and Section 94-7, oops, A and H of the City of Berkeley City Codes to grant the allowance of additional signage where for each sides, each side of street frontage, one sign requiring a permit shall be permitted as required that does not conform to the applicable City Code regulations, and to grant wall signs for a multi-tenant office space of twenty-four square feet and fifteen square feet or six feet as required that does not conform to the applicable City Code regulations based on the following findings. The need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Strict compliance with the ordinance will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. The requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application as well as to the other property owners. And five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
Okay, so Ms. Sarah has a motion, do we have a support?
Support.
All right, Mr. Krug? Okay, um, can we have a roll call vote, please, for this motion?
Member Creel?
Yes.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
No.
Sheriff McAlpine?
Yes. So your motion has passed, and if you just get with Ms. Kaplansky regarding your electrical permit and the lighting, we will be all good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is, uh, application PBA 1624, and it's Katie Cusher, Kutcher?
Kutcher.
Kutcher. Um, and she is requesting a variance at 2945 Coolidge, located on the west side of Coolidge between Wiltshire and Beverly. Um, and she is requesting a parking variance for a photography studio. If you could go ahead and give us the background, please?
Sure, I won't repeat everything that was in, um, the agenda item there about what the variance is for, um, and the use and the parking requirements. But I, there is a couple things I wanna point out from the staff report that I think are very relevant. So something to keep in mind is this site has no dedicated parking spaces. So whatever use goes in there, it would require a parking variance or a shared parking agreement with a- a nearby property owner. It's also not within 500 feet of municipal parking, so that's why that would be required. Uh, Kim had the chance to do a lot of background research on this particular property, which I think is really helpful in this case. So our records indicated that this building was built in 1947. That's before the city had a zoning ordinance. So at that time, there were no parking requirements at all. There were a couple other things in the property file that were relevant. In 1982, there was a memo stating that there was sufficient off-street parking. There was, um, a business license, a couple different business licenses for a tattoo shop that were applied for, and they also indicated two parking spaces on-site, the, and then also had shared parking with Jay's Bar. The best that we could tell or surmise from the- the business licenses and the memos that talks about two parking spaces on-site is that one time this property and the adjacent property were owned by the same person. And it, it would be, it- it's our guess that, 'cause the adjacent property does have two onsite parking spaces, that those properties were looked at as a unit, because they were owned by the same person, and that's where the two parking spaces came from. That's our best guess. I mean, we don't really know, and we don't have the data to support that, but that's where we think that that came from. So now that this property is split off, we're left with a property with zero parking spaces. We cannot count as on-street parking under our current ordinance. And if there's not any, um, neighborly neighbors who are willing to- to consider and give shared parking to this property, they're left with an unusable space. One other thing that I wanna point out is this was a tattoo shop for a number of years before this proposed photography studio use. When you're looking at that, a tattoo shop also has people who make regular appointments and come in and have specific spaces. A photography studio from a staff level, we felt, functioned similarly in that you make an appointment, you come in, you get your photos done. So we don't think that there will be a huge impact on parking in the area. Obviously, we can't say that for sure, but just another thing to keep in mind.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Kaplansky? Yes, Mr. Allen?
Um, during the research, you, one of the things you had mentioned here was, um, a parking agreement with nearby businesses. None filed with the county, ever?
No, nothing filed with the county, which is pretty typical of how our shared parking agreements have been documented in the past. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Does the city take any role in trying to, um, broker those types of agreements? I mean, across the street, there's like twenty-five spots at the Baggers' Daves.
Can't go across the street. Can't go, yep.
It has to be on the same side of the street. And no, we do not take a role, other than maybe saying, hey, it looks like this property that is nearby and meets the zoning requirements has additional parking to give, you might consider approaching them. That's as far as we would go.
So that big lot, there's just the Jay's overflow lot, they're not willing to, or I guess that's probably a question for her.
Okay, do we have any other questions for Ms. Kaplansky before I call the petitioner up? Okay, if you'd like to come forward, state your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about your request and your purpose, please?
Yeah, uh, my name is Katie Kutcher. I am a resident at 10075 in Talbot in Huntington Woods. I actually am representing the landlord tonight, I am his real estate agent. Um, he is not able to be here tonight. Um, we have listed this property, uh, last year, April. We've had two different business applications go in on it, and all have, oh, actually, three, and all have been turned down because of the parking requirement. We have lost a, uh, child rehab, physical therapist, because it's medical. Um, we've lost a hair salon, and now I was brought a photo, a photography studio, 'cause I felt this was probably the best use for this space at this current time, because it is appointment-only, uh, it's content creation, and I don't feel it would be a burden on the parking, um, uh, that the current parking, street parking that there's there. We did knock on doors, we have tried to do shared parking agreements with, uh, we have come up with zero. Baggers' Daves have said they would give us spots, but it was across the street. So maybe when the ordinance changes, we could petition them again for spots. Um, right now, there's only one employee, it is, uh, one woman, um, who takes the appointments. She hopes to hire somebody if the business goes well. She is a current business owner in Troy, um, but this, like I said, is appointment-only, and it's like for content creation, um, headshots, that type of thing. And right now, all we can be is a tattoo shop, so it's been hard to find just a tattoo shop to fill the spot.
Does anyone have any questions for petitioner? Mr. Willner?
So I'm assuming you, you guys approached Jay's about, 'cause they.
Yeah, we've, we've called a couple of times.
They, they just, I wanted to do it.
I think a lot of people approached him for that parking. It's great parking for that area. Um, the liquor store is the, uh, the current landlord. They would give up two, two spots, but they are using all fourteen spots under their ordinance. So I did look into that, they are more than happy to, but then that takes away from their spots that they need for their current parking requirement.
So I, I do have a question, it might be more for Kristen. The per square foot, the space per square foot, so it's right now it's at 200 square feet, uh, per space, right?
Yep.
So does the new zoning increase? I, I, I mean, I thought it was increasing to like four or five.
It actually gets worse for this use, I don't know why.
It does, for this use. But something else to keep in mind is that the shared parking, um, is a little bit different in the new ordinance. I do believe we can cross the street, but I'm double-checking that right now.
It, it did, when we, we sat down with Kim, we did check into that and said we could.
And then something else to keep in mind under the new ordinance is you're allowed to count on-street spaces, too.
Any other questions?
I mean, it's a kind of, there are no spaces, no, you can't have any business.
Yeah, it's just an immoderate space at this point, and we've, um, the landlord didn't look into that before purchasing the space, and asked me to help him through this process, so I said yes.
And the only thing that would be allowed to, to move in right now with no parking considerations would be the tattoo shop, and that would only be because it wasn't existing non-conforming use. Once that has been gone for six months, that goes away.
So, um, no one else has any questions? Do you know how many appointments they would have, what the hours would be potentially?
It's by appointment only. Um, right now, she's only, when they put in the business application, she's putting only her car and one employee. Um, but to say, I said, I asked the same question, I said, do you know, think you're gonna expand? She said, yeah, absolutely, I hope to have one to three employees within a year to year and a half. Um, but it, it depends on the business needs. She is successful in what she does now, she does wedding photography and makeup and hair, but she is now branching out to a studio and content, so.
She would be doing makeup and hair there as well, or just photography?
No, photography, yeah, yeah.
So she would, the idea would be to build up to one to three employees?
I, I believe so.
Working at the same time?
No, not working at the same time.
How, do you have any idea how?
I, I'm not gonna, I mean, she's the tenant, so I can't really speak for her, but, um, right now, it's just she's put herself as, on the application.
So, maybe you can't answer this question, but would it be the thought, I mean, I don't know, my daughter just got married, I don't think they went to a building to look at someone's pictures, to see what their work was like. You know what I'm saying, like when you're entertaining, who to use as a photographer if they do wedding? I mean, they typically have a portfolio online, they look, you look online, you get prices, you.
Yeah, I think she's using this as also as an office space for these types of things, too.
Right.
Um, but she said content creation, which means like you could photog, like, take pictures of things as well. And like groups of people, like headshots, and that would be an appointment. But again, I am not the tenant.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just, I'm just looking at it from the wedding piece of it.
Yeah.
Chances are, you're not going there to get a presentation on what they take pictures of.
Yeah.
I mean, a person going to get a tattoo is gonna sit down with that tattoo person probably more likely.
Probably not, but I, I am not running the space.
Okay, any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so at this point, I am going to, um, close this portion and open it up to the public. I do know that we have, um, a comment that, uh, I will be reading into the record. Um, and this was sent on, I, let me, I'm sorry, let me open up. I have this all electronically, but let me open up the other version, because my word is not. Here it is. Um, it. Um, it was really funky in the word. Okay, so this was sent by Kim Denhy, um, and it says, Dear Kim, and this was addressed to Kim Anderson, I am writing in response to the notification we received from the City of Berkeley Community Development Department, which notified us of a meeting scheduled for Monday, October fourteenth. This meeting is regarding application PBA sixteen dash two-four. The applicant has requested a parking variance for proposed photography studio at two-nine four-five Coolidge Highway, parcel twenty-five eighteen two thirty-three dash zero three five. The application states that there is no dedicated parking for that address, and there are no opportunities for shared parking with any nearby, um, sorry, any nearby neighboring businesses. Um, I own the building and businesses next door at two-nine five-five Coolidge. I oppose the variance unless the featured tenant at two-nine four-five Coolidge is able to secure parking from a neighborhood, neighboring business. There is very limited street parking, and there are no public lots nearby. If they do not secure alternate parking, the other parking option is Coolidge in front of our store. Since there is no stated alternative, the business owners and employees will likely use the street parking consistently and for long periods of time. This creates hardship for our business and causes customers and deliveries frequently parking on the street for short periods of time. We think that this parking should remain available for customer use and others on short-term businesses in the area, and should not be monopolized by one business which relies on street parking exclusively. Thank you for your consideration, and it is Kim Albert Denhy, um, the tenant at, or the property owner at two-nine five-five Coolidge Highway. And that is the only correspondence we have. All right, so if there's no one else from the audience who wishes to speak, I'm going to go ahead and close the portion of the public meeting and open it back up to my fellow commissioners for discussion.
I have-
Mr. Allen.
A question. Um, the letter that you just read into the record, what business is it?
She does not state the name of the business in here.
In number two, if a person is taking deliveries in front of their business, it's not legal. Those are supposed to be, everything's supposed to be unloaded in the rear.
So the-
If I'm-
Mr. Henen, Councilman Henen.
Yeah, I, I was curious, I quickly looked up. It is a custom window treatment.
Hunter Douglas, right next to me.
Hunter Douglas.
Oh, yep, okay. Thank you.
So the person that wrote this letter, they were the person that also owned the other business, correct?
Well, at one time, they were the same ownership. I don't know if it was this particular person.
Okay, all right.
But they are residing in part of the building that was once one building that shared those spots?
It was owned by the same person. I don't know when it was split, or if it was-
I'm just saying, but that, so they are-
That's, that's what was, what we're speculating. We don't have anything that says that for sure, but it seems like following the paper trail, that's where those two spots came from.
And so six spaces are required under the current zoning. How many spaces would be required under the new zoning?
Um, you'll have to give me just a second. One per one hundred, so it, it would be double, but this is something, this is another example in the zoning ordinance draft that we need to take a second look at, because to be honest, it's lumped together with adult businesses as adult photography. So those parking requirements are, are, I think, different than just a general photography studio, so this is flagged for us to look at. And I'll stress again that that's a draft version of the zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
Yes, Ms. Air?
I know in the past, we've had some things that we've had qualifiers to the um, approval of a, of a motion. And I'm wondering if we could move that the employees need to park in a public parking area, n- not related to the street. So, across the street from, I, I know they can't, we can't cross the road, and the six spots are probably including any employee, is that right?
Right.
So we can't say the employees have to park somewhere, because the employee, if they have to park, if they park right in front of the business, that is going to be all day, or as long as they're there. So, um, I was hoping we could somehow say they have to park off-site, as it were.
So there's a couple of things there. We could never count parking spaces that are across the street or in a municipal lot, because that's, you know, not, not permitted per the ordinance. You can attach conditions to the ordn, uh, to, to a variance like that, but you'd still need to grant the variance for the full number of spaces, because they, they couldn't provide them in those locations. And secondarily, as the department that also does code enforcement, that would be a near impossible thing to enforce.
Okay.
So we'd be granting a variance for six parking spots that do not exist?
Correct.
And it, and the zoning ordinance is contemplating allowing across the street to count?
Yes, I believe we're allowing across the street to count, but you'd also be allowed to count the spaces in front. Now, that still wouldn't get them to the six for a photography studio, but I think there's at least two spaces in front there. There are situations like this with buildings with zero parking all over the city. Who knows how they got approved as parcel splits and all of those things, but this is, I've come across, across this several times in the past couple of years, working here. So we're trying to have the new ordinance provide some leeway for things like this, but, and we're not going to be able to catch every building, and I think you're still going to see instances like this because of decades past when things were done, that either we're not in compliance, or before zoning ordinance even existed.
Right, but I mean, we're, we're thinking about going from, and this is a little off, but it's relevant, we're thinking about reducing it down to a hundred square feet per parking spot? Are we taking into account how many parking spots actually exist in the city?
No, we don't take into account how many parking spots exist when we're looking at parking requirements, and I want to put a giant asterisk on that requirement, because it's lumped in with adult businesses. And I don't think that was the intent.
Okay. I mean, right now, a, a tattoo, a tattoo artist could just go in there, and because they're already grandfather, or they already have, you know, non-conforming, so, I mean-
How many chairs could that, how many tattoo artists could that place have, a place have?
The tattoo is better, I mean, is a worse requirement, has one per one hundred requirement.
Yeah, I mean, you, otherwise, no business, we're going to just have-
No, no, I was just, I'm just curious.
We'll have no, it'll just be an empty building forever.
Mr. Allen, I think you-
No parking.
You had a comment, or you had a question?
Yeah, just a comment. Uh, yeah, I agree, we've got some problems that we run into almost on a daily basis here, and uh, we cannot, and should not, uh, in actuality, put people out of business by standing on them, because they don't have any parking spaces.
This is hardship.
It's a super hardship.
Um, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I do think that potentially, if the business grows, it could be busier than it is when it starts out, so we're looking at, you know, one photographer, one, one employee there, but if it does grow, it could potentially be more people, too.
Would it be busier than the tattoo parlor that, that is allowed there now? I mean, if they have-
You could bring three people in for your tattoo to watch you, I don't know.
But it, I mean, is that our, something we should be taking into consideration, I guess, you know, I mean, it, it was in there and approved with six, was that six spots for the tattoo?
I can go back and look.
But-
So there's twelve people, you know, if they all had, had someone there, that's twelve people. Each, if there's six tattoo artists, each working on someone, there's twelve people.
Right, well, and-
You're not going to have that many, you won't have that many with three or four employees.
There-
With three employees.
There was mention of a group coming in for headshots, or a group, so like, if my family came in, there'd probably be three cars, because adults coming in from different areas, that kind of thing. Um, I don't know, I'm just thinking of scenarios that six doesn't necessarily seem like a lot, enough in some ways.
No, I-
Just like with the tattoo parlor, too.
I mean, my thought would be is, if a group's coming in, they're going to come in, and the session's going to be, I don't know, maybe I'm wrong, thirty minutes, I mean, it can't be two hours, so maybe, I, I-
True.
Um, in that case, um-
I mean, if we den-
Mr. Creel?
If we deny this, it's essentially, as Mr. Allen said, it kills the business. I mean, you could park a street over if you have an appointment. This doesn't put them out of business, they can, people can get creative as to how they actually get to the space.
We're not really putting them out of business.
For all intents and purposes, we are.
They can't move into this location, essentially.
Yeah.
I think the difference is we're leaving this property unoccupiable-
Right.
-is the difference. It's not whether it's this business or any other business, there will be no one besides a tattoo parlor to go in there, and if they don't go in there, within that six months, there will never be anyone that goes in.
We're looking at the gas station all over again.
Totally different situation. Um, so, um, any other thoughts or comments?
Only thought I, were there ever complaints of the tattoo parlor, as far as-
No.
Parking?
So then that would also potential, well, we could also assume that the impact of the tattoo parlor did not negatively, or the activity of the tattoo parlor did not negatively impact the business at two-nine five-five, or else I assume if they could not get their deliveries, or people couldn't get in, they would be calling.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, I'm ready to make a motion, again, in the matter of PBA sixteen dash twenty-four, parcels zero four dash two-five dash one-eight dash two-three-three dash zero three-five. Motion to approve the requested variances from sections one-three-eight dash two-one-nine three, commercial of the City of Berkeley zoning ordinance to permit a parking variance based on the following findings. The need for the variance is due to a unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. Two, the need for the variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owners. Three, strict compliance with the ordinance would unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for a permitted purpose, or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily burdensome. Four, the requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the application, as well as other property owners. And five, the requested variance will not adversely impact the surrounding properties.
Do we have a support for his motion?
Support.
That was Mr.-
Support, yeah.
Mr. Willner, I'm sorry. Um, all right, we have a, um, motion by Mr. Allen and support by Mr. Willner, if we could take a roll call vote, please?
Member Krug?
Uh, yes.
Member McDonald?
No.
Member Sair? Member Willner?
Yes.
Member Allen?
Yes.
Member Creel?
Yes.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Uh, next up on our business, or on our agenda, we did receive, um, in our packet, the dates for, uh, the upcoming year for our, um, meetings, and is this just for information, or do we need to make a motion to approve this?
So you should make a motion to approve this, um, and I will let Councilmember Henen correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that council has approved their next year's meeting dates yet.
No.
So we wanted to put this in front of you now, because we don't know if we'll have a meeting in November or December, um, but there could be, if council changes some of their meeting dates, right, sometimes there's a conflict with the zoning board of appeals meeting, then we would just, at the next meeting, bring a new schedule back to you if there was any sort of a conflict.
And Kim did let us know today that there is not a November meeting, so we would then potentially have this in front of us in December if we had a meeting.
If, if you had one, and there was any sort of conflict. Right now, it looks like August twelfth is the only Tuesday meeting date, but that would be the change, if council had a conflict on any of those other days.
Any other comments or questions regarding this?
Is the thirteenth a, a day that the city would be closed? I think it's like the Columbus Day or something.
Today was Columbus Day, and we were open.
Oh, so you, I guess you're open next year. All right.
All right, so, uh, can we do roll call? Or do you need a-
Oh, no, you can do a voice vote if you want to.
All right, so, um, based upon the, uh, recommended meeting dates, we would be making a motion to approve these dates for twenty-twenty-five, with the understanding that if there are any changes once City Council has approved their meeting dates, that this calendar would be adjusted. Um, all in favor of adopting the meeting dates as presented?
Chair McAlpine, um, so, you know, motion maker and a support.
Oh, God, I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
I'm ready, move along. All right, support, motion by Mr. Willner?
I'll support it.
Support by Ms. Sair, all in favor of approving the meeting dates for twenty-twenty-five? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, we are good with that. Uh, next up is our staffer or board member report. In place of Ms. Anderson, do you have anything you'd like to share with us?
Uh, just a couple of things to report. There's the Community Development Monthly Report for July, August, and September that were included in your packet. Um, the draft zoning ordinance, we're working on getting that finalized draft together. I think it'll be released to the public here next, in the next week or so. Um, we will have a booth at the Monster Mash Party at the, the Buckley Month Event, um, so I will be there, Kim will be there, um, we'll have our planning consultants there. And one of the things that will be available for people to look at, which they could look at from their home as well, is an interactive map where you can navigate to your property by address, or click on it via the map, and it'll describe to you what's changing in the zoning ordinance for your particular property. So we'll have laptops there for people to check that out, um, and maybe I'll get some candy or, or something to give away to attract people over. Um, so-
Breadbury.
Yes, exactly, so that, that will be, will be available there. There would be a planning commission, uh, public hearing a little bit later in the fall, or maybe into winter, and then it would go to City Council twice after that, too. So there'll be ample opportunity, um, for comment. Uh, if you take a look at that once it's released, I ask that you email comments to me, um, and I can get them to our planning consultant. Um, Laureen Branch, who I think is in the audience tonight, is your new ZBA alternate member.
Oh, nice.
Welcome.
Um, and then we still need one more alternate, so if anyone's watching and wants to apply, um, we're looking for one more. And then Chair McAlpine mentioned there's no, uh, cases for November, so we will not meet before Thanksgiving, so happy Thanksgiving.
All right, and I was going to say that the community development reports look great. Yes, Mr. Allen?
Yeah, I've been meaning to do this for the last couple of meetings, and I'm going to, I'm going to do it tonight. The redevelopment of the old La Selette property, considering how it started out, I have to tell you, I'm really happy with it. It's really a good-looking development, appears to be well-maintained. And those buildings in the back, however, they're different than the buildings in the front, they still talk to each other, and I think that's really important. And I think anybody involved in that, employee-wise or otherwise, deserves a pat on the back. Came out very well.
All right, um, we will go on to the liaison report. Councilman Henen, do you have anything you'd like to share with us this evening?
Yeah, uh, first, just appreciation for your work tonight, it's a couple of difficult cases, so appreciate, uh, your working through it. Um, with the zoning ordinance rewrite, um, you can see even with our draft, we've missed some things, it's a complex document, and I expect even when we pass it, there are going to be things that we missed, and so, you know, some things may come before you while we work through some of those rough edges, um, but again, appreciate the work. And the other, only other thing I'd mention is the passing of a, uh, the short-term rental, um, changes that, uh, add a few more regulations, so we can, uh, tackle some problematic properties, uh, as well as the new parking regulations that are out, uh, and, uh, the city has released information on that, um, changes to overnight parking and the availability of overnight parking permits, so that's all I have.
All right. Um, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this evening's meeting? If not, um, we are ready to adjourn the meeting, and I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
So moved?
Support?
Support.
All in favor of adjourning the meeting at eight-oh-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Perfect, thank you. See everybody in December. Have a great Halloween and Thanksgiving.
Yes. Everybody get ready for Bookley.